I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Boone Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231, laws of 1975. The notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were appropriately posted and made available to the public.
Mrs. Borda.
Here.
Mr. Brandner.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana.
Here.
Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. Nowicka. Also present Mr. Fattini, Superintendent Principal, I see our student representative, Chris Gillik, Liam Corn.
Great, thank you. Please stand before the House of Representatives. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome. The first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation by Ms. Mon Lee from Miss Savatia and Company, our annual audit. And welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna pass out my usual. Um, shall I do a copy?
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, hello. It's been another year. So, I'm here to give a brief highlights on the annual audit for the year 6324. So, the summary I passed out just now is front and back. And on the top corner, you can see page one. I'm gonna go over the financial highlights first, and if at any point in time you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. So, on top of the first page is the comparison of the fund balance between 63024 and 63023. At 63024, the overall fund balance in your operating fund is $3.8 million, which was a slight decrease from the previous year, and most of that is restricted in various reserves. You have about $70,000 in encumbrances. Those are the goods that you're placing order for as of 630 but haven't received as of that date. A little over $2 million in capital reserve that you can use for any projects in your long-range facilities plan. $350,000 in maintenance reserve that you can use for any required maintenance for your facilities. $58,000 of unemployment compensation that you can use for unemployment claims. $280,000 of current year excess surplus, which you require to utilize in your upcoming budget, in your '25-'26 budget cycle. The prior year excess surplus, $564,000, you're using right now in your '24-'25 budget. And then that leaves you with the 2% unassigned fund balance of $522,000. And then the middle section is just a recap of what makes up the overall $40,000 decrease of fund balance compared to prior year. Uh, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of these numbers here. For example, there's an excess in state revenue, which means above what you anticipated as revenue in your budget of $200,000, and that's mostly from extraordinary A. $580,000 of unspent budget appropriation, but when you factor out the $70,000 in encumbrances, you're left with about just a little over $500,000 unspent, which is only about 3% of your budget, which is not really that big of a number. And you, as I mentioned before, utilized $280,000 to balance your budget. And between the budget and board resolutions, you took out close to $180,000 in capital reserve. We also anticipated appropriate additional funds from the prior year excess they made. Okay? And then the bottom is a recap of the trend of how much fund balance you've been using. So, for '23-'24, like I mentioned just a second ago, you're using a total of $447. '24-'25, $563,000. And part of that in your budget, part of that is going to your capital reserve, so that's for one-time expenses. And then '25-'26, you're gonna be required to use of $280. Okay? And then if you go to the back of the page, page two, the top is just a recap of the activities in your capital and maintenance reserve. So, as I mentioned before, capital reserve, a little over $2 million, and maintenance reserve, $350,000. The middle section is a comparison of these in your food service fund. And at the end of the year, you have about a little under $2,000 unrestricted acquisition, which is a decrease from the previous year. And long-term liabilities, I'm not really gonna go over them or see if anybody has any questions, because that's really, you don't really have anything in here that you really need to put in your budget. It's just for accounting purposes, really, for the district by financial statements. That's it for the financial highlights. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, the excess in the state revenue, so is that what we expected, or why is there an excess in those balances?
So, for example, there's usually excess for extraordinary A, because you don't never know when you do your budget, how much extraordinary A you're gonna get, because of the timing of when the budget is done versus when you apply for extraordinary A and know how many special education students that you're gonna have.
So, it's additional funds for state for special education?
Yes.
Great. Well, it's accounted for for special education, but you can use the funds when you get them for any one-time, I always recommend one-shot, one-time deals, you can do a facilities project with it, because you've already spent the money before, and you're getting reimbursed for that. So, it's almost like a windfall, and you're able to do things that you can't include in your budget. You could do a paving project, you could do a partial roof or something like that.
And there was one other quick question.
Sure, sure.
And it's not a high number area, but under food service, what was, why is such a difference from the previous year?
I think it's because of the, it's just the food costs, right?
Food costs are going up that much?
Well, no, so the only revenues we have in that program are the milk, is the milk money.
Right.
Because the Home and School Association runs that program.
Right, right.
The expenditures, on the other hand, are, we pay, the district pays for all the, I mentioned this in Finance Committee, the free and reduced lunches. So, that's an expense to the budget, and then we have to fund that, so the really the revenues.
So, has there been that much of an increase in that?
Yeah, it all depends on every year of how many students come in, might apply and qualify each year.
And the cost of the food is coming too.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and the cost, so that's our expense on that side.
I was thinking that, and I'm like, I bet you that's, you know, it does play a role too.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to commend the business leader and his staff for doing, always being prepared for the audit, it makes our job easier. There are recommendations in the audit, so congratulations. Good job, John.
Yes, we have a great staff, we have a great district, and we're in good financial shape.
Yes. So, other than that, that ends my presentation. Unless anything, any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Bye. Happy Thanksgiving.
And always thanks to our administration for all their great work in that area. And that brings us to our student representative, Mr. Haley, welcome.
How are you, everybody? So, North One Soccer Championship, they are headed to, they won the other day, and they are heading to the Group One State Championship Saturday at 3 o'clock at Franklin High School. Tonight, Mountain Lakes High School Debate Exhibition took place at the Mountain Lakes Public Library. I happened to pop in or on my way here, so really great for some young kids there, very informative, very educational for them also. November 25th, Girls' Black Football, Juniors vs. Seniors Powder Puff will be taking place at the Turf. December 9th is the eighth grade open house, and that will take place for the class of 2029 at the high school. I intend to be there, I think it would be great for me to be there and spoken to Mr. Haley, and we're excited to that. December 13th, we're gonna have the freshman dance, bringing the concert from '28 together. And then we have December 12th is our choir concert, December 18th is our holiday, that is our band concert. Just out there, what's going on in Mountain Lakes?
Great, well, thank you very much, really appreciate it. And as always, if you have somewhere else you need to be, or homework, or anything to do, we will not be offended if you have to leave.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris.
Good night. And that brings us to board business motions, one through three. May I have a motion, please? If there are a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? And if not, the questions on the adoption of board business motions, one through three, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions?
I'm gonna stay on B O two, probably one and three aye.
B B O two, okay.
And I'll stay on one and two.
Thank you. And that brings us to administrative reports, starting with the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, Mr. Murray. Okay, just a couple of items. As you recall, the November 5th election, as in our rearview mirror, and the results are for our three board members, three seats. Mrs. Borda received 1,324 votes, Mr. Chen received 1,279 votes, Mr. Johnson received 1,295 votes, and there were 44 write-ins. The Finance Committee met prior to tonight's meeting, we discussed agenda items, we discussed the audit, as well as the proposed summer roof project. The '25-'26 tentative budget schedule, we've distributed all of the budget sheets to the staff, they're due back for the '25-'26 year on December 15th, right before the winter break, and the budget preparation is still ongoing, and we'll be meeting internally, we'll be meeting with committees in the coming months. Summer roof project, I met with the architect and the roofing consultant to develop a scope of work and a preliminary budget for the proposed summer roof replacement project. Roof area under consideration will be from room 20 out here, that wing, all the way down to almost the parking lot down by Valley Road, and it's approximately 700, 17,000 square feet. I'm waiting for an estimated budget figure so that we can present, make the presentation to the Finance Committee, the Facilities Committee will get together, and we'll have a recommendation, hopefully by December, for board meetings for CFA. And the funds for the project will be coming out of the capital reserve account that Ms. Lee had mentioned. The fall reports, the District Report of Transporter Resident Students, known as the DRTRS, was submitted in October by the deadline, and November 15th, by the November 15th deadline, and the application for state school aid, the ASSA, is the October enrollment snapshot. That's due in early December, the date has not been released yet, but both of those reports are used to determine our state aid. So, we'll get those in on time, and then we'll be in the mix for determining what the state aid is, probably sometime February, usually February. And then, as you heard, Ms. Mon Lee and Ms. Savatia gave the audit report. So, we have the reports.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Fattini.
Great, thank you. We've had a lot of great things going on in the school. In celebration of the fall season, we're engaging in a school spirit activity called Scarecrow Alley. Students and faculty are building RBS scarecrows that also support social emotional learning. The scarecrows will personify characteristics of the qualities that RBS students are most proud of. So, it's not decided what you are on the outside, it's what makes you up on the inside. So, they'll have pieces of paper and things like that that have been fed through the teachers that are part of the scarecrow on the inside and some displays on the outside as well.
Is that what, in the circle?
That's.
I'm like, what is that?
The cover of the word, the impending rains.
Oh, right, rain that we never get anymore.
Yeah, that's right, and it comes just in time for a scarecrow. Students, family, and staff are welcome to come by into the circle, from now up until the 29th, to look at the scarecrows. There is gonna be some voting, and the group that wins the most votes will get a pizza party to celebrate. The school is also involved in the annual penny wars. $1,700 was raised for Wounded Warrior Project and Canines for Warriors. The week of October 21st was Fire Prevention Week for the K-3 students. Our volunteer fighter fighters took time out of their day to teach our students and provide a meaningful experience on fire safety, and I'd like to take this time to do a quick shout-out to those that not only keep our students safe, but put themselves in harm's way for others when there's a fire. They're volunteers, and they do it because they're moved to help the community, and it is some sort of higher calling, if you will, not out of obligation. So, during this time of Thanksgiving, it's appropriate for all of us to show our gratitude for them, as well as other volunteers, such as our Board of Education. Thank you. On October 25th, a representative from Morris County Vocational School of Technology visited RBS and gave a presentation to our eighth grade students in the library regarding vocational and various educational opportunities and paths. On, let's see, I think it was October 28th, I had a meeting with Dr. Siegel, with Dr. Siegel, we presented social learning, social emotional learning aspects, and it was attended by over 30 people, which included faculty, board members, and parents from both districts. I'm presenting something for the community called Rockaway Valley Roundtable. There are monthly meetings with the Superintendent on the first Monday of each month, where the community can come in and have an informal chat with the Superintendent. At 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the library here, a flyer's been sent out to the school community, and it's also posted on social media, and we're also getting word out through the local news outlets. So, I'm encouraging all community members, not just RBS parents, to join us here at the Rockaway Valley Roundtable. The next thing we have will be the Rockaway Valley Radio. We're starting a podcast to interview all guests about education, discuss educational topics, and even just the life of the oldest person in the community, or a resident who has a certain expertise in a certain field. Any interested residents, please contact me at my email, kfatini@btrbs.org, if you'd like to be included as a guest on our podcast. I am going to Mountain Lakes very often, meeting with Dr. Siegel, we're having ongoing meetings and conversations, and we just met twice in the past two weeks to discuss our district articulation and ways to enhance communication between our districts. We've also discussed having joint field trips and experiences with Mountain Lakes students at the, both at elementary school level and the middle school level. There's also an open house at the high school for our eighth graders on December 9th, and here at RBS, we're going to have our holiday boutique on the same day. The fifth and sixth grade Fall Fest was the night of October 25th. I'd like to say thank you to the Ed Foundation for their support in maintaining this tradition and providing this opportunity to the students. They also supplied pumpkins for the fifth and sixth grade Fall Festival and all the other classes in the school, which came out to be about 100 pumpkins in all. The service squad, thanks to them, helped unload all the cars and bring the pumpkin in the school. Again, thank you to the Boone Township Ed Foundation for purchasing the Annie Drum for the music department, and the truck retreat on Halloween was well-attended, and I had a good time judging the cars. The theme for the RBS play was also revealed, is going to be Beauty and the Beast. And a thank you to the HSA for providing soccer balls, footballs, and now pickleball nets and paddle balls and paddles for the students to play with at recess time. And finally, fall sports. The boys soccer team finished the season with a record of 7-3-2. The team advanced to the semifinals, where they lost 1-0 against a very competitive team. Out of 17 players, 11 scored throughout the season. The top four goal scorers were Evan Lukin, Landon Costa, Brady Golden, and Jason Panzer. Charlie Jansen stepped up as a new goalie and allowed only seven goals in net and had numerous saves. Girls' soccer team went 6-5 during the regular season, where the losses were close in terms of the competition, and the girls lost in the semis to assumption 2-0. Kelsey Glass was the team's highest scorer with 13 goals. Goalie Annie Bush had 56 saves during the season. Every athlete on the cross-country team improved their personal best times throughout the season. Out of over 900 athletes competing in the grade-level races, Ian Johnson finished with the overall second-best time. Once again, that's over 900 athletes. Austin Schreger, Lily DiOrio, Jonathan Ponte, and Ian all took home ribbons at the grade-level races. Fifth graders had a great showing throughout the season on their first official school sports team. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. And you've all had a chance to read the nurses' report, the student attends' report, and the staff attends' report, and that brings us to accommodations, Mr. Fattini.
I'd like to thank our teachers for the care and faultfulness in what they were preparing and conducted their parent-teacher conferences last month. Thank you to the HSA for bringing us the Fall Book Fair, the students enjoyed enhancing their home libraries. Additional thanks to all the HSA room parents for their help with Halloween parties and the parade. And a big congratulations to Mrs. Portell on another successful Veterans Day concert. It was well, well-attended, packed auditorium, even people spilling out into the hallways. Many thanks for the meaningful music, bulletin boards, and arranging for the speakers for all grade levels. It was a fantastic day at RBS. Next is a spotlight on school work. September congratulations go to, in preschool, Arthur O'Rourke and Carter Winters. Kindergarten, Nina Cadenzaro, Gavin Coleman, Cooper Feldman, Delaney Hamlin, and Rosalie AiConan, and Maxwell Stellati. First grade, Colin Cortez, Willa Tarzik, John Tepakas. And second grade, Kate Hager, Lana Heed, Byron Markowitz, Colin Ramick, and Pip Stipes. Third grade, Evelyn Chen, Jackie Lang, Audrey Letowski. And flying high in fourth grade, September congratulations go to Angela Lita Brant, Steel Wyatt, Anaya McDonald, Nathan Snidkraut, and Ella Biermeister. Falcons of the Month for October, congratulations go to, in fifth grade, Shanti Star; sixth grade, Alana Santilipo; seventh grade, Ryder Zaleski; and eighth grade, Joey Barber. Thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Yeah, thank you. And you've also had a chance to read correspondence number one, and with that, we get to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators, according to the chain command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items at this time? Yes?
Hi, Brendan Miller, 337 Powerville Road. Mr. Murray, you mentioned the summer roof replacement in your report totaling about 17,000 feet. I was curious about what percentage of the roof that is, and knowing that work has been done this coming summer in the last couple of years, what percentage of the roof remains unaddressed and still needs to be fixed in the future?
We actually did, that same topic came up in our Finance Committee meeting, and with the summer project, we would have completed about 70, almost 72% of the roof, which leaves another 20, roughly 28% of the roof to, for the future. Now, the majority of that roof, the rest of the roof, was all in the referendum project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items at this time? If not, we'll move along to the sun reports, starting with the Mountain Lakes Board of Education.
Okay. Just to add to what our student report said, there's a few other good things that are happening for the students. The Key Club participated with the trigger suites for PG Chambers School, where that's where they go through hotel room by hotel room, and they, you know, this type of stuff. It was a wonderful experience by them. The academic team qualified for nationals, and, oh, and regarding the auditorium, I didn't, we caught up on this in the past, but they had to postpone again, so their fall drama and turned into musical was all fully canceled at this point. It's really a bummer. It was first because they made musical, it was gonna be, they figured they could do it in December, but it wasn't gonna be ready in time, and then they switched to make a Charlie Brown musical, but there was a copyright, there was an issue with the copyright in getting the permission to do that show, so hopefully that the students had a great time practicing, and the drama, you know, is just unfortunate. It should be finished mid-December. Mrs. Cerisi gave her presentation on NJ SLA scores. It's a great presentation, and it's up online. I'll put a link to it in my notes, in my agenda, but they had very positive results pretty much across the board. ELA, they're working to move students into group four and five out of, into meets and exceed expectations. So, in ELA, they went from 85% to 89%, and they decreased the one and two from 6% to 4%, so good in both directions. They're seeing stability with the children who have IEPs. And in ninth grade in geometry, oh, no, that's ELA, there was a really, really alarming trend of a 23% increase in, in, something like that. Math, they improved from 74% to 77%, and the decrease went from, in the lower, in one to two, went from 12% to 7%, so again, just really great results. While their science was a little bit lower than last year, they had, and it seems, they had a 57% proficient and advanced, which seems pretty low, but the state average was actually 25, so it's a little bit of the nature of the test and what's being taught. So, they outperformed the state by 32%, and they compared themselves to other district factors, and the district factor J that they're in had a 58% in proficient, and they were 57, so they're kind of like right in target with their, like schools. So, yeah, and they also looked back at how they performed against the other district factors in ELA in math, and they outperformed, so doing, although there's always room for improvement in intervention strategies that they're looking at working on, are, they're working on a new curriculum program, they're looking at benchmark assessments from sixth to 12th grade that will be created by the teachers, so they're very, sort of nice movement in their benchmark assessments, I feel like. They've been working on them, they feel they have a lot of good buy-in with the teachers on, on benchmark assessments. They're also looking at test, focusing on test readiness with math. They're working also, I guess the state is also clarifying and delineating standards between Algebra I and II, and separating the standards a bit more, so they're gonna revise their curriculum over the summer. They're focusing on standard language and the standard, and unpacking the standards like language, the language of the standards, and incorporating that more into the curriculum. And working on professional development and examining the sub-scores in science and working on some professional development. Their, the board president had shared how excited she is and how excited the community is that we've resolved the send-receive agreement. She's gotten tremendous feedback, a lot of good vibes going on within the community. Superintendent had to say that they, well, they've successfully hired two SCL officers in the Office of Emergency Management. Homeland Security was coming to the school to do an evaluation, which is, the school stays from time to time, and they'll get a nice recommendation so that they can update the security plan at my school. I don't know what's going on. It was, it was your great meeting. So, trying to hit the topics, the kitchen is almost done, they're going through inspections this week, so the kitchen won't open up again. We talked about the auditorium, Lake Drive Vestibule is getting in bid for the second time, they didn't get it the first time, so if no one bids, then they can go out and find something higher on the road, they don't have to put it out for them. Happened to be at the, oh, no, this is mine, the Untcharted Waters, I was at the presentation between Dr. Siegel and Mr. Fattini, it was, it was fantastic. It was really wonderful to see so many Mountain Lakes parents and staff members here, here in our library.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was fantastic. That's that.
The cafeteria, is that in the high school?
Yeah.
So, it hadn't been opened?
They had, like, food trucks, and they've been making it work, yeah, but, yeah, they're getting a total, grease traps, new everything, it's like... between Dr. Siegel and Mr. Fortini, it was fantastic. It was really wonderful to see so many Mount Lakes parents and staff members here, here in our library.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was fantastic. That's that?
The cafeteria, is that in the high school?
Yeah.
So it hadn't been opened?
They had like food trucks, and they've been making it work, yeah. But, yeah, they're getting a total, new grease traps, new everything, it's like, it's going to be.
The layout's still the same, right? It's just the kitchen itself, they, as far as the process of getting food?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Sports updates, there was a recreation committee, I think that's, that's pretty much it. We have, we know about the concerts, and the Emilia is going to do a holiday fundraiser, they do a 50/50, so that's been, that's what they've been up there.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I could also say to attending the SEL presentation, I want to commend Mr. Fortini and Dr. Siegel for their initiative and cooperation in making that happen. It was a really great presentation. Thank you.
That's fine.
And that brings us to New Jersey School Boards Association.
Yeah, so October 21st to 23rd, myself, Alicia, and the NJSBA workshop in the before, in Atlantic City, also there was Mr. Fortini, Mr. Murray, we also met Dr. Siegel and Tom Chang of Mount Lake State Station in the event. There were just numerous, so many of those good train sessions and meeting sessions, a number of NJSBA, some topics included special education, board governance, the power of board committees, preparing and delivering the school climate surveys, building community partnerships, campaigning for referendums explicitly, and building a positive board student partnership. And if we and Alicia have any suggestions as well, I'm afraid of, Chinatown was a great, a great event, a great network for other quarters and, you know, and our board.
Excellent, thank you very much. And that brings us to Morris County School Boards Association. Crazy's not here, I'm trying to think, is it December 2nd? It's coming up soon, if you'd like to go. I think it's, it went to be in, at the Morris Schools, I'm not sure, I think Morris County School. I think actually one of the topics, if I recall, is governance, board governance, I believe, Dr. Ruchy and some folks, they're going to do a presentation on that. So if you're able to come, you know, all the Morris County School Boards Association means are also great to attend. More local, you can network and learn a lot of stuff there too, so if you're able to come, I highly recommend. But don't quote me on the date, I think it's December 2nd, but check to read. And then Educational Services Commission of Morris County, I'm our representative to that. I attended a meeting last Wednesday, but I have to say, at that meeting, there is routine business was conducted. And next is the Boot and Township Special Education Parent Advisory Group.
Here is what's new in our Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Parent board presentations recently met with the school administration to discuss plans for upcoming presentations. Once the dates are finalized, all relevant information will be shared with the public. We do have one upcoming event, and that is on Thursday, December 5th, at 6:30 PM here in our school's library, there will be a special presentation focused on understanding the field of special education. Topics will include the key differences between an individualized education plan, also known as an IEP, and a final format, a detailed explanation of the referral process for special education services. The presentation will be led by Mrs. Megan Beery, a school psychologist and consultant who brings both professional expertise and personal insight as a parent of a child with dyslexia. Mrs. Beery is deeply committed to supporting olderity and works closely with various organizations across New Jersey, including the Learning Disabilities Association of New Jersey, New Jersey Legacy for Olderity Coalition, Jersey CAM, Free For Engine, the College Dyslexia Engine, as well as various other New Jersey C-Plans. This event promises to be highly informative and valuable for parents, educators, and anyone interested in understanding and supporting the needs of special education families. We encourage all to attend.
What's the time again?
It is, it's going to take place on Thursday, December 5th, at 6:30 here in this, yeah, this. What, who's her?
Great, thank you. And an update on the Morris County School Boards Association, their meeting is Wednesday, December 4th, and I believe it can arrive at 6 o'clock, and their presentation starts at 6:45. Get that correct. And that brings us to the Boot and Township Education Foundation.
So the Ed Foundation has their annual fundraiser this Saturday, and they're thinking of, notice, Finance Motion Number Seven. We thank the Ed Foundation for the generous grants to the teachers for years' programs, it's around $3,500, so they, so thank you to the Ed Foundation for supporting our students and our families.
I forgot to mention too, that they gave about $2,500 to the high school for two grants there as well.
Great, well, thank you, and thank you to the Ed Foundation. And that brings us to the Rockaway Valley Home and School Association.
So there are a bunch of sales that have closed this week, so the holiday pie sale closed yesterday, pickup for pies is Friday, and the wreath and poinsettia sale ends tomorrow. HSA is sponsoring ice cream, which will be sold on Thursdays starting tomorrow at lunchtime, and then the holiday boutique is December 9th to 11th, and their next meeting is December 30.
Great, thank you, and that brings us to Township Boot.
I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. And lastly, Boot and Township Green Team.
Amy? Yeah. So, the Green Team has been focusing on, we had all these great cleanups when we were out in the community, and now we're kind of focusing on what we're going to be going for next. So we achieved the bronze for 150 points, you achieve, you get points by actions that you take within the community, so the silver's 300 points, so that we're hoping to do that in the beginning of 2026, so we'll be working on this year. One of the interesting actions that we're thinking of working on is municipal water story, and it's actually very timely since it's been so dry lately, but it's just understanding how it's a shared resource among our community and who's on well, if there's water and where it's quality, and what's the plans, if something goes wrong, how to take care of the river, you know, it's like, it's all encompassing, this should be really interesting to just kind of be able to tell a story that we all understand that are a shared resource. So we'll be meeting on Saturdays at 2:00, going, just checking in, and if anybody would love to, like to help out, if you'd love to have that resource, we hope to be, to do this, we'll have to work with the township, the planning board, the environmental commission, and different parts of the community to gain the information for it, so it's a pleasure.
Where, Saturday's at 2:00, where?
Saturday's at 2:00, it's virtual.
Okay.
And I guess the link will be in the, the Friday email that goes out to the community. Not the back, but the, no, not the back, but the township times or news for the week.
That's great, thank you very much. And that brings us to Facilities Transportation. I don't believe the committee has met, but we do have a motion for Facilities Motion Number One. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Facilities Motion Number One, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to Finance, and the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met before this meeting, so Ms. Hermy, Mr. Brandner, himself, and Mr. Chen were in attendance. Mr. Murray stole my thunder, so I think he talked about everything when we did go over the audit, and happy to report there were no findings, as we have heard both the auditor and Mr. Murray say. Want to thank, kudos to the administration as well for a clean audit and a good financial standing. It's, knock on wood, it's been every year, so it's, much thanks there. We went over the standard motions that are on the Finance Board Agenda tonight, they're all very standard, nothing but your report there, and we did discuss a future roof project that is also aforementioned.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Finance Motions 1 through 9. May I have a motion, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Murray, I want the call out. Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Finance Motions 1 through 9, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to Personnel.
So Personnel met yesterday, right? Yeah, yesterday. And we approved a staff resignation, which has also been a staff hiring of a preschool teacher, and then we have, are approving tonight, Mrs. Morgan Robb transitioning from Svet Director to Assistant Principal, so congratulations and thank you. That's it?
Great, thank you, and congratulations as well. And with that, may I have a motion for Personal Motions 1 through 7? Is there a second? Is there, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Personal Motions 1 through 7, this is a roll call. Mrs. Barna?
Yes.
Mr. Brandner?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Nowicka?
Yes.
Ashley Carey?
Thank you. That brings us to Program. The Program Curriculum Committee met this morning, and we discussed various things. We discussed committing goals, we discussed the math curriculum, we discussed using data and, using data, use of data in enriching our curriculum. We also discussed our curricular articulation, vertical and horizontal, that's within Rockaway Valley School and with Mountain Lakes. We also discussed the use of assessments and consistency and reliability of assessments. We discussed the curriculum review cycle, because often, you know, different curriculums will come up for, I guess, review at the state level, there's like a timeframe that will always go on, so we discussed the calendar for looking at that. And we also discussed current Gillingham training, both current and future. And with that, may I have a motion for Program Motions 1 and 2? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Program Motions 1 and 2, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any extensions? That brings us to Policy.
We have not had a meeting, although we set meetings for both December 2nd and January 6th, because there's several batches of policies that have been updated and need updating on our behalf from New Jersey School Boards, so we have that planned in the future and we get these policies updated.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Open Session Number Two. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board, personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter? There being no one, that brings us to Old Business, or is there any old business to come before the board? Is there new business to come before the board? Yes?
So, Adam, New Jersey School Boards, Sharley Pierce was running one of the discussions, and it was on governance and retreats and self-evaluations, so it was like kind of all that. And so, do you think that it's time, we should do our self-evaluation before we start the next year, technically? I think it can be done at any time, so I would love to do that.
Absolutely, we did, and we did last year, we resurrected that, and we will, we should continue, for sure.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. And also, I guess new business that we have to get the governance committee to meet sometime, probably after Thanksgiving and before the next meeting, you know, to catch up on some good stuff. And... So, Mr. Brandner, I think you made arrangements for?
Yes.
Peterson to come in?
Also, yes, for New Jersey, one of our board goals is to get our recertification at the next level, and we have scheduled for the next board meeting at 6:30, starting at 6:30, Sharlyn Peterson, who will do, actually, it's not going to be Sharlyn Peterson, it's going to be someone from NJSP, their state office, who will just talk about paper relations, because we're about to embark on our negotiations with our teachers in our district, the Boot and Township Education Association, so we thought that would be a great topic to present, and that will also give us credit for our certification moving forward, and it's just a good thing.
So December 18th will begin at?
6:30.
6:30.
Yeah.
When do we need to reestablish the, reestablish that?
Yes, we have created, the board created a committee, so of course, the year is coming to an end, and we have to reestablish it in January, so I'm not sure if there'll be much happening this year at this point, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just may reestablish the committee again, and then appoint members to it at that point. But definitely, anyone who would be interested in being on the negotiations committee for the BTEA contract, you know, keep that in mind, and when we send the email asking if you're, you know, wanting to be on it, you know, please, you know, say you're interested, and I guess if it gets to be January, then it's going to be part of the, right, all the committee, you know, asking your interest. And that, with that, is there any other new business to come before the board? If not, there is no closed session, we have no need to reconvene, and we have no other board action, so may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming, and have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December. Thank you for coming.